Interest in career development. So helping students identify areas where they're interested in pursuing postgraduate career plans. We emphasize the foundations of professionalism. So what are the skills and habits that are important to students being successful in the workplace? And then also sort of groundwork, personal finance knowledge. So that's all part of the Pathways program that has sort of both curricular and curricular elements and also speakers and activities. And we can talk more about that in the Q and A. And so that's, that's the, the quick pass through, through our program. And we're certainly happy to talk more about some of the technology aspects or implementation of the Pathways program.
So I'm curious, where is your school located at in Omaha?
We're at 100, excuse me, 120th and Blondo. We're in the Lozier Professional Building. We have a partnership with Bellevue University. And that's actually one of their buildings, but we leased the entire building. And that's where our high school is actually at right now.
And where is the location of that building? Is it downtown?
No, it's actually in the northwesternish part of Omaha. So right at 100, just north of 120th and Blondo. So we're right between, basically between 120th and Dodge and Maples, West Maple. Kind of sitting right there.
At a school accreditation visit to North Omaha High School?
Oh, okay. We're probably two to three miles away from North High School. Yep.
So what are your intended locations here?
You know, we are, Academica has actually has somebody out in the community right now looking at different locations. And the nice thing was Mike Hugle helped us out with the same information that we already, that already discussed earlier. We're looking at the areas of need in Cedar Rapids for, you know, we see that there's a lot of students opting out of the Cedar Rapids School District. You know, in looking at the research for six, 12 schools, we've, we've already noticed that, you know, Franklin Middle School, Roosevelt Creative Corridor, Jefferson High School and Metro High School, the areas where they're in, all those schools are needs improvement schools and are losing students that are opting out of those districts. So, you know, we're going to be very mindful of where the community needs something and see if we can't help to add another variable to the education setting to better educate students and keep students in those communities.
Other questions?
Yeah, sure.
May I ask you that?
I have a question just again, you, you addressed a little bit, but in Cedar Rapids are have or are currently a number of what I would say non-traditional schools and then of course the large and strong parochial school presence. So how do you, how do you present yourself differently? That again, addresses the needs of these students who have not found themselves in either the Cedar Rapids Community School District, the new Metro Downtown High School, or some of the other alternative programs?
You go ahead. Particulars, but I'm, I think, you know, some of the, sorry, there's the camera. Some of the elements that we discuss here are really the, the selling points. So the focus on active learning, you know, project, project based learning, students getting up, doing experiments actively, building and creating, I think is a, is an aspect of the, of the program that makes sense for a lot of students who have been looking for other, other options. And so definitely both in Santa Rosa and in Omaha, those schools, while, while private schools have really focused on being an alternative, not necessarily for students who are, you know, in danger of dropping out always, but students who, you know, don't, don't do well in the lecture class, who want to be up and about and who are, you know, eager to work on authentic projects rather than a, you know, a bunch of worksheets or really, you know, sticking to a book. So, you know, that's, that's part of the selling point on that, you know, appeals to a particular demographic of student in, in a distinctive way, I think, from some of the other schools that we've talked about.
And to kind of springboard off of what, what Jeff has said, you know, our Pathways program, we help students and it will actually start in the sixth grade up through 12th grade. We help them identify what path they want to take in life. Now, if that path changes somewhere between sixth and 12th grade, that's, that's fine because we're there to support them. But by immersing them in the community and giving them opportunities to meet with businesses and see what businesses are about or different colleges. Right now, I'll just use my Omaha campus as an example. We have well over 35 business partners that we work with right now, giving kids the opportunity for internships, on the job training, all sorts of different activities as well as they come out, come in and give professional presentations to the students and talk to them about things. We also have great relationships. I think we're partnered up with about six colleges at this time in Omaha and another four or five out in Santa Rosa. So we give them that immersion. Couple of times a year, we take all of our students on college visit days. Well, we take them to several college campuses and they get to spend the day on a college campus to see what it's about. We also, you know, military is another big one. Being a veteran myself, you know, we take kids to currently in Omaha, we have Offutt Air Base. In Lincoln, we have the Air National Guard Base. So we're able to immerse kids into that as well. And then on top of that, the service leadership that we focus on with kids gets them out in the community to show how to give back to the community. So we partner with homeless shelters, nursing homes, hospitals, food pantries, and get our kids out there doing some of that community service. So all of this, we feel when they're all said and done, we've created not only a learner, but a lifelong learner that is part of society and can be an active member of society. And I, I think that is our big selling point. We're not just getting them to a GPA and getting them a diploma and saying, okay, you're off to the world. We want them to be able to take all of that and become a lifelong learner and continue to be productive member of society and, and make something of themselves. Cause that's what it's about. It's about the kids.
How do you strike the balance between college preparatory? If they follow that post-secondary path and you have created a space in the classroom that doesn't have that, I'm going back to the, the slide that you had and how you take the not high stakes approach. And then I'm thinking of that kid that gets excited about being in the classroom and the approach that you have, and then they get into the college classroom where it's, here's your first study for your semester exam.
You know, our, our classes won't all be, you know, we may teach, I'll, I'll just use physics for example.
Sure.
Physics to the kid that isn't interested in going the college path may look different than what physics looks like for that student that's going to that traditional college, the way instruction is done in the college. So we, we put them in a path where we know they're going to be successful because we don't want to set them up for failure. I mean, nobody wants to do that. But, you know, our kids are graduating, the ones that are on the college path. We have a lot of, they take college classes on campuses. They take college classes in the high school. We have instructors that have master's degrees that are teaching dual credit college courses. So, you know, we're, we're setting those kids up so they're ready for the path they choose rather than, okay, we're going to do project based learning and now you're going to go to college and you're going to sit there in a lecture format and you're going to be lost. We cater to the needs of the student and what path they choose to take.
And I think that's the, especially the sort of the opportunities for, you know, junior college courses or college courses, especially in a high school environment where we can provide some additional sort of scaffolding and support, gives those students some initial exposure to what it's, what it's going to be like in college and sort of minimizes some of the, the shock of that transition, especially in a case where we have sort of de-emphasized the pattern of, you know, here's an A or here's a B test.
What sort of relationships have you built in Cedar Rapids with businesses, industry agencies in the way that you have in Omaha?
So we met with the, we met with the mayor at Cedar Rapids and we had a lengthy discussion with her. And she advised that, again, we have a year to have these, these meetings and these community and build these community partnerships. Already with the industries that are in Cedar Rapids, we've already identified two major industries that we already want a partnership and they've shown interest in what we're doing. And they would like to see some sort of partnership and internship with our students, which is a very good sign, especially when you have industries wanting to work with the community because they understand that these students are going to be their future employees. And it's part of the circle of why education and, and why education is so important to a community, right? We're trying to become a feeder to these major industries. So we're giving ourselves enough time to create these relationships in Cedar Rapids. And we've already had a very good first wave of experience. We look forward to, to cranking it up 150 miles per hour within the, God willing, that we get approved. But we are looking forward to, to many more partnerships in Cedar Rapids.
One of the things to note, I'm actually moving from Omaha to Iowa once approved. And my family and I will ingrain ourselves into Iowa. A little bit about myself, I started off, went to high school, got out, went to college and failed out miserably. So I joined the army, spent five years in the military, got out, opened my own business while I went to school and have been in education now for 25 years, 22 of which were in public education. And then I moved over to the private sector when I went to Quest Forward Schools. Part of me being in Iowa shortly, God willing, we get approved, is to start building those community partnerships, to start ramping up the buzz about our schools, start working with different organizations to see what, where exactly we need to focus our, our students towards and get the program needed that's necessary to help the community.
Other questions? And then I'll entertain a motion.
Mike, I would, I'm sorry, John, I would move that we approve the recommendation for this Quest Forward Cedar Rapids.
I have a second.
It's been moved by Cindy and seconded by Cass. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Can I stay here?
You do stay there.
So this is Quest Forward Des Moines. And I won't go into a lot, it's pretty much the exact same thing, although there is an error in my summary that I do want to point out. Quest Forward Des Moines will eventually serve six through 12, grade six through 12. So this is on the first page, table one. But I have, I have it a bit wrong. They phase in, they're going to phase in in their grades. They're actually phasing in six through seven in grades nine, year one. They're going to add eighth grade and, and 10th grade, year two. And then they're going to have 11th grade, year three, and 12th grade, year four. So I apologize, had that a little bit, got a little over ambitious.
Is that, is that different than Cedar Rapids? Cedar Rapids is all at once.
No.
It's going to be the same.
It's going to be the same. Yes. It's just that the discrepancy was just on this application. So that's why we have to address.
Got a little more descriptive on this one and I was wrong unfortunately. So at any rate, you know, the, the process is always, is the same. The strengths again are the same. We've, we, the interview that we did, of course, we did one interview per applicant from the two applications. The other, we did have a public forum for this one was Franklin Junior High, because of Des Moines location. Unfortunately, we did not have any public present. And I did ask the applicant, give me information on how they advertised so we can be sure that that was appropriate. So our recommendation for Quest Forward Des Moines, who received an average score of 64 requests that required components, required by Ohio Code 256E. The applicant responded affirmatively to all assurances and conditions in the first application. The applicant did not request any waivers. The submitted calendar does have a start date or could potentially have a start date before August 23rd. Legal counsel advises the applicant is exempt by Ohio Code 279.10 subsection 1. It is, it is recommended that the state board approve the charter with or without conditions, but at this time, we have no recommendation.
Quest team have any additional information we need to know about Des Moines?
Actually, I would just like to mention that when we met with some local stakeholders here in Des Moines specifically, we noticed that there was a military base. And we have a strong, obviously, we have a, a strong support of the military. But we also wanted to find out and we wanted to explore different academies in, in this specific location for first responders, for 911 communications, police and fire academies. So because we have this army base, because we feel that there is a strong support by the, by the police department and by the local firefighters, we feel that the school, the, the school that we want to open up in Des Moines would be geared towards those academies. So what it would look like in the classroom is that we would obviously have a police officer teaching forensic science. We would have a firefighter teaching biology. And obviously they would have their certifications as a teacher as well. But having a firefighter or a police officer in the classroom teaching these students is a different level of engagement. And we feel that that would help engage the students, not only gear them to a great path, a, a path that they would be serving their community, but also a, a good path as a citizen, as a community member.
I will also note for both our school locations, the goal is and always will be to find local Iowa educators certified to teach our, our schools. We don't want to bring people in from other states. Yes, I'm coming from Nebraska, but there's a lot of similarities between Nebraska and Iowa. And I'm already a certified administrator in Iowa now. So, I mean, but our goal is to find local Iowa people to be the instructors at all of our schools.
And we're actually working with Mike Hugle, the coalition. And we're, he's helping us identify the local talent. We know that there is so much good talent here. And we want to make sure that the identity of these schools screams Iowa. We want to make sure that the identity of the students, the identity of the community, it is thriving through the Iowans. So we want to make sure that whoever is teaching in those classrooms, the, the directors and the leaders, they are from, from here, from Iowa.
Any questions from the board?
I'm, I'm just curious about activities. How do kids plug into football band, glee club or what, you know, or debate or whatever? How do you, how do you handle that?
Usually in the first years, those are, those are clubs that, there aren't a lot of them during the first years of creating and developing a school. Because we're starting off with six, seven and nine, we would probably look into local clubs that the community would help us do within our school. So there's going to be a huge community engagement in order for us to launch those activities.
Another part of that, and it's, it's something I've worked with at smaller schools and with our school in Omaha, is co-op opportunities with other schools. My current students in Omaha, we don't have our own sports teams, but we co-op with another private school that does have the sport team so that the opportunities are there for the students. So because we all know any activities, clubs, sports, it, it's all vital to that school experience and forming a well-rounded student.
And I always say that's the fun part of being a family that begins in the startup of a charter school is that we're, we're there to serve the interests of those families. So a lot of what gets created those initial years are student and family interests that become clubs and activities within the school. So that's the fun part of growing with the school.
There are concern on your part about plugging kids into various businesses around the community and keeping them safe. We all, we know we're going to vet teachers, we're going to hire, but when we're going into the community and offering kids an opportunity to work with business or, or, or health places. Yeah, it'd be my concern always that, that we protect kids.
We do a very good job of vetting our business partners and community organizations that we work with. Cause by no means do I ever want to put a student in an unsafe situation. So yeah, that, that's just one of the things that they have to go through a process where we look at them, look at their background, what type of business it is, what the safety concerns may be for students. We also know there are some industries where at certain ages, students can't be in there working at that, you know, taking an internship or something of that nature in that business area. So those are all things that we take into consideration to keep students safe.
Thank you.
Welcome.
President Robbins, I think Cassandra has a quick clarifying point.
Okay.
I was just going to add, Director Mayor, I was just going to add that also charter school students have the ability to participate in activities at their local resident district as well.
Yeah, so that would be part of the model of, the, the public model of collaborating with other schools.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
I move to approve Quest Forward Charter Schools Ethical.
I got.
Moved by Nathan and seconded by Brooke to approve the application. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Much.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Yes, thank you.
It was a perfect time.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
So much.
They have travels.
That remain today and not tomorrow. You're going home tonight, right?
Don't bring me up on work.
That's fine.
Seriously? Are they supposed to get sent tonight too?
Yes. And have a power.
We do.
Um, Steve.
Yes.
Um, scholarship, I'm sorry, it's a long day. Scholarship prep will have a presentation too, so you guys can, since you have you signed in. So.
For you.
Someone's got to.
Seriously?
Enjoy.
I'm going to have Jason sign in. Jason is going to sign into, Jason Watts is going to sign into Zoom. While he's doing that, I'll go ahead and start and then we'll get him set up. I think we might get you guys back on schedule, right? Or are we back on schedule?
Yeah, we are. And that's where we want to stay.
We're 10 minutes ahead.
Oh my.
I wasn't supposed to say that, sorry.
Take your time, Steve.
Well, um, this is scholarship prep and they, they did have two applications, an elementary school and a middle school here in Des Moines. We have Jason Watts, Executive Director is here. He's working on the computer. Have Andrew Crowe, Deputy Director is here also. I'll go through the summary real quick and then we'll let them take the floor. They did submit an application on timely manner, November 1st, 2023. The applicant overview, we have a brief overview there, but we'll let them speak to, to their target student population and their program. They are, for the elementary, their grade levels will be K through five. Their target population is homeless and foster youth. Des Moines, Des Moines is a proposed location and they're proposing to open in the fall of 2025. So they did not ask for any waivers. The application process review is same, of course. The strengths, a strong commitment and application of problem-based learning, culturally relevant instruction, a focus on arts and athletics embedded in the curriculum, and documented success in operating successful charter schools in California. This charter management organization is California. So they're probably a bit in shock with our weather. Challenges, lack of community support and interest at this time, little evidence that families actually have an interest in a room. And then facilities still need to be secured and they are working on that and I'll let them speak to that. They had a, they had a score of 58 point, an average score of 58.62 with a range of 55 to 63. We of course did our, our interview with the, the group. Questions based on 256E and any other questions that came up. The interview, the interview questions and answers would be available if you needed to see them. We had a public forum. This public forum was at Franklin Junior High and unfortunately we did not have any public members there. Then I asked that, I did ask the applicant to provide me with their public notice. And that's there in table four. The recommendation for scholarship prep elementary school, as they received an average score of 58.62 across the required components in Iowa Code 256E, the applicant responded affirmatively to all the assurances and conditions in the charter school application. The applicant did not request any waivers. The submitted calendar may start before August 23rd as legal counsel advises the applicant is exempt from Iowa Code 279.10 subsection 1. It is recommended that the state board approve the charter with or without conditions. And this applicant, we don't, we would not recommend any conditions. So I'll let, I'll let him come out and. Yes, did you?
Yes. We did.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Check the screen.
I love seeing Cindy on the jumbotron. Makes you feel like she's like right here with us. You're on the jumbotron. You've been on it for like 20 minutes. She's like, I don't want to be on there.
You can close your eyes, you know.
It makes you feel like you're in the room with us. It's really nice.
Inside.
You ready to go? Okay. First of all, good afternoon. I know you guys have had a long day and we are the last group to meet with you. So we appreciate your patience and we'll be worth your while, we'll see. My name is Jason Watts. I'm the Executive Director for Scholarship Prep. I'm here with Andrew Crowe, our Deputy Director. And we're going to go through our program, kind of the key five and six, eight combined, just to save you time. So we're going to go through our, kind of like the foundational mission and vision, our kind of core model where a lot of what we do, and really the foundation of what we do, is when we reach out to families, we reach out to community members, we reach out to potentially interested students. You have to have these kind of components in place. You've got trust, learning, and then really understanding the community is essential. We are kind of unique in Southern California. This is where we're from. We have four sites out there, but they're all in different counties. They're not really close to each other and each school is very different. It's forced us to have to learn the communities in which we've gone into. And the demographics are very different, as you will see in a little bit. So through that process, it's kind of given us the confidence in a way to say we can go out to a place like Des Moines, to Iowa, and learn the community in a similar way. It's different, there's no question, we have a lot of work to do and we'll talk about that. But kind of understanding the core components that have made us successful at this point. We are in year eight of our operation with those four schools. It's that trust, that learning and then learning the community for us that's built the capacity to where we're at now. Uh, just really quickly, some kind of accolades we'll go through. Uh, we've been very fortunate to have some strong academic results. Uh, as far back as 2018 on the state assessment, we had the number one math growth in the entire state of California. We had the top uh language arts growth in all of Orange County as well the same year, top 1% in the state. This is with a student demographic that was uh and still is over 90% free reduced lunch eligible. And predominantly Hispanic with about 50% of the family speaking Spanish. So that demographic had never seen those results in that community ever. That success led us to a seven-year charter renewal. We were the second school in the state to receive this seven-year. California had kind of newly implemented a seven-year opportunity. It was always five years up until a few years ago. And when they changed some of their requirements and um the pathways, you could get a seven-year if you demonstrate high academic outcomes. And then finally, we received a California Senior School Award, which just is uh kind of along the lines of how we performed academically with the demographics that we've uh had in our schools. A couple of other things that I haven't already talked about. All of our eligible schools have received state accreditation to the highest extent. We've received uh funds from the California Department of Education for our work with uh homeless youth as well as uh developing the community school model. We've secured, this number is actually higher now, but over $30 million in bond financing from the state for uh facility acquisition and development. And finally, we received $12 million from the federal uh grant fund for, for the charter school growth and replication model. Uh, based on, again, our outcomes with the demographics we serve. Our program, obviously can't get this done in five minutes, but just kind of like a very broad-based perspective of how we've gotten these results. Uh, and Andrew will talk a little bit more about that too. Starts with a really strong academic program, very rigorous. Uh, and the foundation, instructionally, is this problem-based or project-based learning. Uh, it's nothing new. We've all heard of this. Uh, many schools do this. Our core kind of focus is ensuring that we have real-world problems that tie directly to grade level standards, but ensure that they are rigorous so that the outcomes regardless of what they are for every grade level really are aligned to the requirements of what that state will require on the assessment for the grade level standards. And of course, we integrate technology, et cetera, to ensure that this is able to be done. One of the things that makes this unique is that, you know, our name is Scholarship Prep, so conceptually, we're trying to get kids on a scholarship pathway to college. And so one of the ways that we do that is we incorporate uh electives that start at the youngest grades, kindergarten. So students can choose pathways, athletics or the arts, along with, of course, their core content areas. So they can choose these pathways every single year. They can vacillate. They can say one year maybe in first grade, I played soccer and it was great, but I want to try now performing arts. And what makes this really important is that the demographics we typically serve are students who are, you know, in poverty-stricken areas. They don't have access to a lot of these different opportunities, whether it's transportation to practices, paying for tutoring. Uh, well, not tutoring, but music instruction and those types of things. And we bring that to the students during the school day for free. So we're closing that opportunity gap. We have a collegiate theme, again, to go along with our name, so all of our unit classrooms are represented by top universities in the nation. We need to check on the Iowa stuff, make sure that's represented. Absolutely.
No cyclones, we got it.
We'll, we'll, we'll take your written uh recommendations before we leave. And you see that in the classrooms, the students represent that. They have university t-shirts that represent the university they get to wear one day a week. We have weekly pep rallies where you're trying to really get the students engaged uh with just the things happening around campus, the student uh council is involved. But also bringing in some of the university information, you know, did this university win their football game this week? Or a famous person from a university did something about news and we're gonna talk about that.
And so we've really done this, as you can see with the data up here, with, with the most underserved kids, the kids that, that need a high-quality education and a school of choice. So our demographics here, as you can see, are, you know, uh, two of our campuses are 90% free reduced lunch. The other is about uh three quarters of our kids are free reduced lunch. Uh, we are serving the most vulnerable and what's really important to us are those last two columns there, our homeless and foster youth. So we, we started these schools saying we are going to go where the families need us. And we didn't start with a focus on supporting homeless youth. As we began our organization and we were in these communities, uh, you know, the pandemic hit, the housing markets. Wherever you want, want to see, we've seen these increasing needs of students experiencing uh families with housing insecurity. Um, and when we talk about homeless youth, we're using, right, the McKinney-Vento definition, not necessarily the HUD definition. So these are families who are doubled up, tripled up, um, substandard housing, without running water, without electricity, campgrounds, motels, hotel shelters. And so we have established these communities where we are uh 10x, 15x the percentage of homeless youth at the schools right across the street from us. So we have created these environments, like Mr. Watts talked about, where we, we start with this trust and we are currently serving vulnerable youth and we will look to do the same on the, on the south side of Des Moines. So we looked at, at, you know, the state, we, we targeted Des Moines. Uh, and then we looked at, okay, how do we sort of narrow that down? And in the, the data process, the academics, the demographics, and our work with uh some meetings with, you know, D-Mark, the Religious Council here and, and sort of where have you all seen the need? And they identified the need being, being on the south side. So we looked at, these are the schools on the south side of Des Moines. You can see that all of them have a free reduced lunch population that is well above the Des Moines Public Schools' average. So we know that it's a community in need, but the south sides, we're re- really honed in on that. And almost all the schools have a higher population of homeless language learners and the special education rates down there about mirror the district average. So that's what we've identified as the south side of Des Moines to, to bring our program. When we tried to uh zero in on where we would go, who we would serve, and, and most importantly, who we would serve with, we met with community partners. So you, you see D-Mark up there, uh, DMAC, we've met with Grandview. Um, the, the Family Promise and Homeward are both uh organizations um that support families experiencing housing insecurity. Unfortunately, Family Promise just closed, uh, I believe December 1st. So that was a, a partner that we had worked with and they're like, we are in this, this movement, in this community and we're trying to find these partnerships. And we just came in a little bit too late, right, to be able to kind of support them. But these are a like-minded organization that we have connected with, that we will hopefully, once upon approval, be able to get the word out about Scholarship Prep. We have a recruitment plan in place that we've used uh i- in, in California that we would use here. Um, first and foremost, it is going to where the, where, where the families are. And ours is such a specific population that are, uh, we're not on the face, you know, gonna have a, a banner saying, are you experiencing housing insecurity? Come talk to us, right? We would be connecting with these organizations and saying, our school is coming here, you know there needs to be wrapped around holistic services. Let's talk about scholarship prep. So we have a recruitment plan that includes, you know, social media, going into the community, hosting uh community, uh, being at community events. Um, and really partnering with the organizations to get the name out there for this specific group that we're really trying to, to focus on. And some of the ways that we do that, we have a very comprehensive model that has been recognized, you know, uh, statewide, California, nationally, for the support you provide to students. So that is, you know, dress code items for, for, for all clothes, um, a pantry on campus. Every single one of our classrooms has a um, a resource center. So in every single classroom, every kid who comes to campus has access to toothpaste, toothbrush, toiletry products, hair care products, anything they might need that might stop them from participating in class that day. And so we make this the norm. We started out with doing this in one classroom and two classrooms. What was it gonna be? Were kids gonna be ostracized? Were kids not gonna be vulnerable? How are staff going, going to, to handle this? And what we found is when you're visible with this, when you're visible with, hey, you might be struggling and need these supports, it's okay. Kids and families are much more open to, to, to naming it and saying that they need support. Uh, every single one of our kids, when they come onto the campus, we receive the threshold greeting by an administrator. And then when they enter the threshold of their classroom, they receive a threshold greeting, right? They're, they're customized or individualized. That might be the first time that that kid has heard their name or heard a welcoming voice or had something positive. It's the last time they were at the school. Uh, in addition to that, every single day, we start the day off with a 30-minute community meeting. And in that, we build community between kids, between kids and adults, uh, and sometimes between adults and adults. And that's a way to create this safe space for, for our students and families to feel welcome and loved. That is a, a big reason why we've been able to have success. Our academic success has been incredibly strong. We're doing it with the most vulnerable kids and we would hope to, to do it here in Des Moines and we'd love to, to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
So, so it's one thing to have policies and programs and systems in place. But all of those things don't really mean anything if you don't have the people to implement those things. So my question is, how, how are you, coming from California?
Yeah.
Uh, targeting a specific population that has unique needs.
Yeah.
Um, how are you going to recruit the right people to implement these things?
Yeah.
Caters, the administrators.
Yeah. Absolutely. What we have found, right, and when we're going into even the different communities in California, it's so different, is our applicant pool of staff i- is a little smaller. It's a little smaller than the, say, the general teaching population. But the folks that want to work with our students and our communities, they are passionate, they are steadfast. And they're, it, it's a calling, right? Education is a calling for everybody. But then when you're saying now, no, I want to go to where the most vulnerable is. So I think in terms of the recruitment process, what we found and what we would do here in Des Moines is we would be super upfront with, right, the students we're seeking to serve. And that might stop some folks from applying for us. But what we found and what we anticipate having be here is it would, it would create that pool of, of staff members who are already here locally, right? And who are saying, hey, I'm coming out of pocket right now to give my kids snacks. I'm coming out of pocket to a kid that has lice, right, and they're coming back from break and I'm paying for the treatment. Wow, there's a school that does this, there's a school that would do that. So we anticipate it being that it'll be a, a beacon, right, to those staff members who, who really want to uh enact that change.
Thank you.
I have, I don't know if it's like a process question or, um, so is this school like a, it's, is it like a, could it be treated like a Des Moines Public School? So anyone can.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
So I guess, and we've had several of these, and I think that what these schools want to do is incredible. But I guess my question is, how do you make sure that that targeted population are the ones who are actually being served?
Yeah.
Because in 10 years, maybe everyone wants to go to that school. But how do you control that? Because you, you, you can't just pick and choose who gets it.
Yeah.
Right? So I guess, I mean, if everyone wants to go to that school, how do you serve the people who the school is meant to? I don't know. And maybe it changes. I, I'm not sure.
That's absolutely a great question. So what we have in our, our current, like, enrollment processes at, at our existing schools and we anticipate doing here as well, is we have those exemptions and those preferences for that. And so we actually currently, um, students experience, homeless students and foster students don't actually go into the regular lottery. They have a separate process to get in and once those students, during the, like, the open enrollment time period, right? Then, once those students are placed, then students not experiencing homelessness for the foster care system are then kind of lotteryed out.
Okay.
Great question.
Thank you.
They have to have a lottery system.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that the, the target population.
Absolutely.
Sir, sir. Okay. That makes sense.
Make sure they're on target.
Right, exactly.
As intrigued by the uh, the photograph with the uh toothpaste and stuff. What other supplies do you give out?
Yeah, so um, I, I, I could, I could list it all off, right? So um, I, I love the laundry service. All of our campuses have a washer and dryer on campus.
I was gonna ask.
So all, so that's created some problems. We, we did one upstairs, not very smart. Uh, but we've now kind of located them to where fam, because it started with us taking clothes home, right? We were taking our clothes, the clothes we give to the students, right? And then taking them home and washing them, bringing them back and blah. And so we said, okay, let's have a washer and dryer on campus. And then like, okay, cool, Jan is a staff member, Jan's going to wash and dry. Hey, why don't we let our families have access to this? So now we've established where families are able to access our washers and dryers during the day. And we did that because we first tried to do gift cards to laundromats. That was our first thing, because it's sometimes hard for our families to get to us, right? And we've tried gift cards or laundromats and it's very hard to find a laundromat that does a gift card. And so we couldn't give families cash or quarters. So then we had to say, okay, what we're gonna do is a washer and dryer on campus and as much as possible, put it in a space where they can access it without having to go through kids and without having to be seen. So laundry service, um, we give our kids um, you know, dress, uh, tops, sweatshirts, have to be jackets here in Iowa, um, pants. Uh, we have a special fund that we fundraised for that has done um bed, uh, bedbug, uh, whatever, you know, cleaning. Um, we've, we paid uh rent for families. That's on a separate thing. But at the school, they get all their clothes, all the school supplies, the backpack, um, food, snacks. Every, like, anything you literally need to, you know, uh, to, to succeed at the school, we have on campus.
To answer your question about the, the cart, you saw the toothpaste in the cart. So these classrooms, as he said, have these what they call O-carts, because literally every drawer is a different color, uh, looks like a rainbow. And the carts really are filled with whatever is best aligned to the, the needs of the students in that school. So as an example, we have a school that has a significant number of African-American students. So those students said, hey, we need certain types of hair care products that you didn't have in there. We need certain types of things that align to what our needs are. And so we're able to meet those needs and our staff, every single day, fills those drawers to ensure that every single day needs are being met.
Did you remind me?
Go ahead, Mike.
No, that's, uh, I don't want to, I don't want to get, get in your way. Uh, could you remind me again, maybe in staff can, uh, staff can help with this question maybe? What kind of an investment have you already made in Des Moines? A- a- and, and what infrastructure um costs have you already incurred or have you yet? Or when let money arrive from the state to you? Could somebody just remind me of that a little bit?
No money, no money comes until they, they have enrollment. They're open and have enrollment, so no, no.
I think, are you talking about the slide that you seen, Director May, that said they received um money from the state? That, I believe that was from the state of California.
Correct, that's correct.
Iowa does not have uh similar funding for charter schools at this time.
We're happy to talk to somebody to make that happen.
Well, I like the bottom dollar commitment. I mean, I think that's great. I mean, if you have to do this. Uh, but how much money, I, I, that's not a fair question, but you've already invested. Uh, and you will continue to do so? Is that, is that the promise?
Y- yeah, for, for us, you know, the, 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 the bottom slide here, the, the $12 million in federal grant funding, we can't access that unless we open up new schools. So the, the, for the CSP funding, tho- those monies, you know, would be coming to, to the state of Iowa and go through Scholarship Prep. Uh, but yeah, we, we're super excited about that, to invest that. We're super excited about our possible facility on the south side that we think will be a, a very big investment for the whole ci- city.
You guys have a.
What do you have to accomplish? Maybe, what, what do you have to accomplish first? Do we have to just approve this and then the money's gonna come? I mean, what are the other steps in which you can access that money?
My quick response would be, you are correct. We'd have to be approved first in order to be able to access any uh funding streams, uh, whether it's from the state or elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
You guys have a facility um picked out or are you still looking or?
The answer is, uh, yes. It is not solidified. Uh, we were actually there right before we came uh here today to lock it again. It is in the south side, uh, and so we are just kind of going through the process of what that facility will require in order, in order for us to open it as a uh, uh, school facility.
So I make a comment on the importance of uh laundry. Not only for the well-being of the uh, the students and families, it's also for the well-being of the people who work in that facility. Sometimes when kids come to school and they're not the freshest, it makes for a long day.
And a little bit more flippantly, it's tough when it's a middle school kid and it's the middle of the day and they don't have any deodorant. And it's nice to be able to have that piece, right, because then they're feeling more confident, staff is feeling more confident and you can have a better environment.
Any other questions or comments? So we have uh, we have two. And we've been talking about the K5. So we'll move on that first and we'll talk about the differences between the K5 and the middle school.
I move, I move to approve this application.
It's been moved by Mary to approve the application.
I'll second.
Second by Nathan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. It's carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Why did we have to do these and to just set up?
Two separate applications.
Oh, okay, because it's for, one's for K through twelve and then one's for the middle school, so it's two separate, okay.
So this, this application is for the middle school. And that the um, this is the final application. Um, they did uh, their application to meet the deadline November first, twenty twenty-three. Um, this is a six-eight. Six-eight school, uh, which projected to open fall twenty twenty-five. Um, and again, they're sitting the same, same target populations. And no waivers were requested for the, for the six-eight school. Um, strengths again are pretty much the same, uh, problem-based learning, culturally relevant. You know, the focus on the homeless and and just, you know, disenfranchised youth. Community support again was a concern of ours. Um, and then, of course, uh. They still need to get their facilities, but they are working on it as they stated. And their average score was fifty-eight point eight with a range of fifty-five to sixty-three. Um, you know, they had a, they, again, the interviews were the same pieces of, so we did one interview for both.
Okay.
Schools. Um, the public forum was one, one public forum. Again, it was at Franklin Junior High. We did not have any public attempt. Um, and then we asked uh, again, that the, that they notify us of how they notified the public, so we could be sure that was done. Uh, the recommendation for scholarship prep middle school, uh, they received that average score of fifty-eight point eight. Um, last required components of fifty-six E. The applicant responded affirmatively to all the assurances and conditions of the charter school application. The applicant did not request any waivers. The submitted uh, calendar indicates they could start before August twenty-third. But legal counsel advises that the applicant is exempt from Iowa code two seventy-nine point ten subsection one. We are recommending that the state board approve uh, the charter with or without conditions, and we don't have any recommendations.
So is there anything we need to know about the difference between operations between elementary and middle school?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Just broadly, uh, there's a lot of the same types of programs and offerings. So electives go all the way to through eighth grade. Obviously, the supports and services for all of our homeless and foster youth, et cetera, are the same, obviously based on individual student family need. Uh, programmatically, a lot of the same types of things overall as well, worst problem in project-based learning. And we dive deeper into that in the middle school grades, of course. Uh, in better alignment to expectations for high school. Uh, our goal is that when they leave our school, they are hitting the ground running as a ninth grader. Uh, and really already in their mind what university they may be able to go to. Not just want to go to, but may be able to go to. And so that rule kind of opens up for them. Uh, Andrew could talk about some of the specificity in terms of the middle school, maybe programmatically.
Yeah, I think just the, the only thing I'll add is, you know, when we look at the six through eight, when we look at our our students and what we anticipate here, right? With the model here being a K five and six-eight, you know, as a statewide model, is uh, it it gives opportunity for our kids to feel like they're in a separate space. Right? A K eight school, i- one continuous school doesn't allow that break in transition in the middle school to have its own, its own space, its own place. We've also found and theorize here that it uh, it's easier to attract middle school teachers when they're on a middle school setting by themselves. You know, in in a middle school, uh, you know, kind of containment. And that allows you to even departmentalize at at six through eight. So it's the same core instructional model, it's the same supports. Uh, it's just having a separate middle school allows a little bit more of feeling of, hey, we're not with the the little kids, we're not with the babies. We're on our own, we're here in a middle school, we can compete against the other middle schools. But the last thing I'll say is we try not to be too much of outsiders and we had to take into account, but you mentioned a couple of times. And we will definitely make sure that our school year doesn't start during the Iowa State Fair. So that is the one thing that's been piled into us. So I want to name that, as no matter what, it won't start before the State Fair. So, thank you for that clarification.
And you need to go to Iowa State.
A hundred percent, absolutely.
Cause everyone go to it.
Good recruitment, maybe.
Um, are you guys gonna be uh, getting two separate facilities in two different buildings or just one and then separating them out or something or?
The latter. So kind of economies of scale, having one site that can accommodate all the students. Also makes it easier for families. Obviously, the families we're talking about, it's just easier when all, if they have siblings especially, that go from K through eight or. Transversal's grades, that they're on one continuous site.
Hopefully, right? That's a plan. That's a plan.
Is it looking promising?
Yeah, yeah.
The site would absolutely hold all those students.
Other questions or comments?
About how many students are you hoping to have, I guess, per grade?
Yeah, I mean, I ideally at a build-out, it's roughly two classes per grade level. That feels like a two-class per grade level that puts you at a, at a, at a, throughout the whole K eight at five hundred, six hundred kids. Feels like a sustainable model and it's, it's not too big that it becomes unwieldy. And it's also not too big that you're not really focusing on a target population of of a homeless and foster youth.
And and again, I I think I'm curious more than anything, but are you uh, also focused on after-school programs? Or trying to plug the kids into community, community groups so that they're involved in some things like that? I know what the population you're talking about, it's really difficult. And uh, but but how do we keep the kids interested in in and do you, are you concerned about that issue and how do you deal with that?
That's a great question. Uh, it's extremely important to us. So, you know, one of the advantages we've had in California in the last basically eighteen months or so. There's been new funding streams to allow us, all public schools, to kind of really reemphasize the importance of having those students with you. As long as you have them and then making the most of that time. And so we've always done that. We always have a a large number of students who stay through. Hours after school. And the goal, at least in my mind, is to ensure that that time is well-spent. The time is utilized to support the students in a variety of ways, social, emotionally, academically, extracurricularly. That's a word. So ensuring that you've got after-school programs and include athletics, the arts, tutoring them necessary. So we've really built out a robust after-school program now that we can take conceptually here at Iowa.
Yeah, things that we currently offer our schools and would would imagine that we offer here based on staff availability and knowledge. In addition to intermural sports, uh, as we offer a cosmo, uh, we have a cosmetology club, uh, we have a Spanish club, we have a. Uh, a hula dancing club, we have someone who's a Pacific Islander. And so really, it's based on, we we just. Like our current staff, right? It's it's a win-all around because we're able to give our staff some extra funds, right? Work an extra hour. We're able to have them build relationships with kids and going back to that trust, we're having able to build them in a non-power dynamic setting at classroom. Uh, and we're able to let teachers have a little fun and do something after school. So absolutely, we would uh, want to have a robust before and after program.
That sounds really good. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval.
Second.
This may move by. And second by Nathan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Apollo, same sign. Motion is carried. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You all could be done with us.
Thanks so much. Gonna take a ten-minute break?
Have you all been invited to the taproom?
Bring the meeting back into order. You with us, Steve?
Yes, sir, ready to go.
Hey, before, John, before we move on, uh, could, could I just make a couple of comments about the process we just went through? So on the. The charter school applications, first I wanted to thank Tina and Janet and their charter school team is very thorough. But I would note that when the application was with the report, that was helpful. Uh, as as opposed to just the report. But one comment I'd have, if you looked at all of them, they're very, very similar. Similar strengths, all of them had the same challenge almost. And uh, very limited public input, if not zero. Probably because the notice was a legal notice. Very tiny, buried on a page with a bunch of other estates and trusts and. Foreclosures and stuff. I don't know that people would see that, uh. You know, so if that's required, great, but maybe there should be a little more beef in the notice. So we could hear something. Because, you know, I. Everybody said, oh, you know, we'll, we'll get public uh, input. And stakeholders, once we're approved, well, you know, it's a chicken egg thing. I'd I'd like to know what the public support is before. We approve. It could say, you know, they could get that input subject to state board of education approval. You know, are you interested in what we're proposing? I think that would be relevant information. For us to know. And if there's any update to information before the meeting that can reasonably be presented to us, it'd be nice to. Nice to know that as well. And my last comment is. And I know this isn't the same, but bear with me. You know, racing and gaming, for example, will say, well, there can only be this many licenses in the state. We don't want casinos to cannibalize each other financially or whatever. And I'm not saying that's the same for schools, believe me, but, I mean, is, if, if next year at this time, we have. Fifteen applications and they were all the same as today. Are we gonna basically say, okay, yes, to fifteen more? Even if five of them were in Cedar Rapids or five of them were in Des Moines? I mean, is there an overarching plan for where we want charter schools to go? Or if there isn't, should we be? Starting to think about that? I mean, I I know we're scratching the surface now, but I I'm just thinking ahead. Those were my only comments.
Couple banyan thoughts. I I agree when I saw that there's nobody at the public hearing, that's odd. But I guess if there's a, there's a need, if there's support, that will come through. If anybody shows up to attend their charter school. So people show up. There's a need. If there's, they don't show up, obviously, there's something wrong. It's kind of at their own. Their own, I guess, risk of uh, taking on a charter school adventure, which is not an easy task. That's why uh, several, not, but. At least five of them have a, an operating agency that they're working with to help them manage. Start up in the ongoing operations of the, of the charter school. I don't think it's this board's prerogative to establish the number of charter schools in Iowa. But it could be this board at some time, uh, maybe make a recommendation or or visit with whomever. Uh, would be willing to listen as far as, is there? Is there a maximum or magic number as far as the number of charters in Iowa? It's not up for us to decide that.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that's a legislative function, but. You know, ha- maybe somebody's already thought about this and we just don't know it. I I don't know.
I don't think we're quite at the saturation point. Yeah, but maybe Cedar Rapids in Des Moines, they are, I don't know.
Maybe, I don't know.
Find out when they started rolling.
I don't know. The the, the only thing about, you know, okay, we say yes, and if they don't make it, they don't make it. Well, you know, they, we, they are stirring up some interest or, you know, in the community. And then when it doesn't happen, I suppose, that's probably a, at least a small black eye. Plus, people are spending money. Uh, you know, and what if, what if somebody came to us and said, we're ready to start. You know, August of twenty-four. And we've agreed to August of twenty-five for someone and they want to do the same thing in the same neighborhood. Would, would that be a factor or not?
Kind of what Mike said, though. Ordinating, I can't remember his coalition's.
Iowa Charter School Coalition?
But that, you know, that these people who are interested in starting charter schools come to him first. Or an organization like his, and maybe we could have some input in that, but. And say, where, where is the need? Where should we go? You know, it's not, it's not just a free-for-all.
I don't think they have to go to him.
They don't.
Yeah.
But they have.
That's advisory. That's like a trade association.
Yeah.
But I mean, they.
It's a good idea.
Then they want to be successful.
Yeah. But I think as a board, we. I think that as a board, at least as I understand the law, which I haven't read in a while, but. Is that we have to approve if it's, unless a department recommends that we not approve, like unless there's a, a, a big reason not to. I don't think that, I mean, like a reason not to would be like they can't financially, or like there's something huge on their application. But I think based on their application, I mean, I don't think that we can.
I think the word is shout, shout.
Yeah. So I don't think, I don't think we can factor in things like saturation of location or something like that, you know?
Well, but, you know, before we came, before we had this meeting today, when I read all these. And I saw the financial stuff, information not provided, information not sufficient. I I was ready to come on pretty strong against one or two of these because of that. I I don't want to approve something that didn't fulfill the requirements or. Now, it turned out they did, we were told. But you know, what, what if somebody didn't provide the financial projections or something? I, I mean, I don't think we're a rubber stamp.
Well, then I think the department probably wouldn't recommend that.
I don't know. It it said financial concerns, we recommend with or without conditions today. On every one of them.
But don't you think that's the department's?
None of them said deny.
Well, I think that's because they provide what they need to provide. I guess that's how I understood it, but maybe I was wrong.
Anyway, I just, maybe, maybe I misreading the whole, the whole situation.
And Jane, Jane's not here.
Yeah. Tina, do you mind calling Janet back? I, um.
Hello?
Mr. Kane, I believe uh, Janet clarified i- in response to the specific instance you referenced. That uh, sufficient documentation and and clarification was provided. Um, but I I just want her to confirm that for you again directly.
No, I, you don't have to bring her back for that. I acknowledged that when I asked the question. That was part of my rationale for saying, well, if we know that. And it's before the meeting, you know, just, just shoot us an email that says, delete that weakness from your consideration. That's all. I, what I, what my, my last comment was, if. If that was still there and it was true. As of the time we're. Considering approval. Are we to just approve even if the department says recommend?
Director, can I, or the board, do you mind if I give some clarity? Because it was my team that helped to review some of the financials for charter schools. Um, Director Kane, I I can give a little bit of clarity of the concerns that we were seeing in some of the financials, just in general and overall. Um, there was a lack of detail for some of them, so we couldn't replicate some of their calculations and assumptions that they were creating. And then some of the schools, just because of a lack of understanding of Iowa school charter, uh, charter school finance. Um, they didn't understand the uh, types of revenues or the calculations for the revenues that they were going to be receiving. And so their, so their assumptions of the underlying uh, financials were incorrect. Um, however, when we noted those um, deficiencies to the uh, review team. Um, we did note that we would, my team reached out to each charter school, uh, where deficiencies were identified and said that we would work with them. Uh, either to say they weren't able to create a budget that made sense. or through creating a budget that, or, or until we seen a budget that made sense. And that was our goal. So whether or not that helped to inform the recommendation to still approve, that was the plan on our end is to provide that proactive assistance to the charter schools to make sure that they understood within the context of Iowa charter school finance, the budget that they were presenting, if that's helpful.
Yeah, just, just a thought as a businessman. If, if I go into business and have a successful business and build that business long term and would like to branch out and start another business somewhere, I would love to have somebody finance it for me. Somebody else take the risk. So if I could use somebody else's money, wouldn't I do that? Or wouldn't there be a lot of takers who would say, yeah, you know, I'll take a chance too? Because I'm going to invest someone else's money. So the question here for me is now that the charters have been approved, can they immediately begin to access money? If so, then by gosh, we're going to have a lot of these because a lot of people would say, and I'm not being cynical, I'm just saying it's pretty easy to take a risk. And to Brian's point, if you have five or six of these in the Cedar, focusing on this Cedar Rapids area. Yeah, is that over saturation? Probably. But again, what are, what are the? Yes, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, and I think this was noted a couple of times that funding is based on student enrollment. So if you want to dive into that a little deeper, Cassandra, that'd be great.
Yes, sure. Director May, they do not, charter schools don't receive any funding from the state of Iowa until they've actually enrolled students. And the first money that they would access from us would be the September of the fall that they open. So they would be actively serving students and being paid just for those students that they're serving. At least from an, the charter school funding model that we have in Iowa. Now, if they've secured other startup funds from either their charter school management organization, such as the Horizon did this year when they started or in the case of scholarship prep, that they have federal funds that they have available to them to start up. I think that's the, that's their, those programs that they're accessing, but as far as Iowa money, the way that we have, we fund charter schools is not until they're actually enrolling and serving children. If that's helpful.
Yeah, I think that, I think that makes me feel better. However, they are accessing federal money. Some of them are. And as you said, maybe they have parent organizations that are helping them do that too. But yeah, that helps. Thank you.
And then I, I just want to make sure that there's much clarity around Mr. Kane's earlier point. And Cassandra, if you could clarify again, that the Department of Education would not recommend or bring forward an application with financial deficiencies and did not do so. So the, the reports, as Janet noted, because of the quick turnaround, did not reflect the most recent information. But again, if you could just clearly restate your points about the financial points.
Yes, it's my understanding and Tina, Janet's bureau chief is in here as well, and I think we're in agreement that if, if we did find deficiencies that remained after we provided the financial assistance that they needed to inform their budget and the assumptions that they should be using to inform their budget. If they weren't able to create then what we would believe to be a sustainable fiscal model, then I would not have supported recommending. And I think that Janet and Tina and their team would have also not supported recommending moving forward with approval of the application. We would have given them an opportunity to return with additional documentation in the next cycle. But for the current cycle, we've not have recommend, recommended approval without reflection of sustained fiscal sustainability.
Well, I, I just want to say for the record, A, I appreciate all you do. I trust what you guys are saying. I'm just trying to point out that under challenges, for example, empowering excellence, it talks about outstanding budget inquiries that need to be addressed. Or limited financial resources, which may cause difficulty as the charter grows or has financial projections based on inaccurate per pupil dollar amounts. So I, as a member of the board read that and I circle it in red and I'm like, hey, what's what's going on with that? That? And then I learned today that those had been addressed. I just want you to know that I came to this thinking they had not been because they're still in the report. That, that's all.
Thank you for that feedback. We'll make sure that that information gets communicated to the board once those documents are released. If the information needs to be updated, that's a very valid point and we will make sure that doesn't happen again.
Yeah, you, you know, that's, that's fine. A simple email or something way upfront, hey, this is, this, these are the edits for today. That would be that would be great.
This is Mary. I'll just add to the fact that these are public documents and in the public document in the public domain for people who are just reading this and not watching this video will see that. And it does appear as if the board, the department is approving these applications with insufficient funds or questions about budgeting processes and things like that. So I think it would behoove all of us if there was a correction made from these applications moving forward, if information changes.
Thank you for that feedback.
Thank you. That's it. Sorry. I went over my two minutes.
Thank you, Brian.
I had the stopwatch on you, Brian. Thank you, Brian. All right. Thinking of budgets, here we go.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Cassandra Klein. I'm the bureau chief for the Bureau of School Business Operations. And I'm reporting to you today, the summary of action from the School Budget Review Committee, the SBRC hearing that occurred on December 12th, 2023. The committee met that day and reviewed a number of informational items. A number of these, these things are annual items that come regularly at the December hearing, including reviewing the negative unspent balances. The three districts that are listed here did appear each individually to provide a corrective action plan for incurring that negative unspent balance. We also looked at state decile ranks. So this is that amount per pupil that remains in their spending authority with and without the categorical funds. And so we've done that the last few years. New this year, and you guys can view this if you're so inclined on the Department of Management's website, is also the UAB by enrollment categories. So we separated those by a strict 50, 50, 50, 25 at the bottom. And then we also separated those by enrollment category of three to under 300, three to 600, six to 1,000, 1,025, 25 to 7,500 and over 75. And in both types of categories, the highest per pupil amounts were in the smallest districts and the lowest per pupil amounts were in the largest districts. And so there had been some speculation of where those might fall, and it was exactly what was thought. There, these numbers are used not to determine whether or not a need exists when a district makes a request, but it is one of the metrics that's considered when they try to understand that local context of the need when districts make requests. The district also reviewed requirements for correct and the number of late filers for the certified annual report, the special education supplement and the annual transportation report. And then also there were, and those districts also appeared to provide a corrective action plan and then reviewed the number of late filers for the certified enrollment, the FAS report and STAR report, of which there were three, three and four, which is down significantly from the past few prior years. So we've made a concerted effort to work much more proactively with districts prior to those deadlines to ensure more timely filing. The committee then worked into eight class action hearing agenda items, including supplementary waiting, on time funding for increased enrollment, of which there was approved about $19 million of MSA for 113 districts. So that on time funding for increased enrollment is for districts that experienced an increase in certified enrollment this year over the certified enrollment that they were actually budgeted for this, or that they were funded for this year based on last year's certified enrollment. So this is a way to capture and provide additional spending for authority for districts that are serving more kids than the number that they were funded. Additionally, there is, where there were 282 districts that received about just under $49 million in MSA for those students that were openly rolled out from their districts, but were not on the prior year headcount. And, and and that also is just spending authority and then districts have the authority to include that in their local levies if they wish. Continuing on with the class action items, they also approved over $13 million for 191 districts for the LEP proficient applications. So these are for students that are served beyond five years. So the, the Iowa's funding a formula allows for funding of those programs for students within their first five years. So this is a mechanism outside of that. So if a student needs to remain in an EL program beyond that five years, those districts will still receive that additional funding and it's in the same, the same amount. They also approved about just under $23 million for 151 districts who incurred costs beyond the funding they had available to provide those LEP programs. And so these are for districts who had state funds, local funds and federal funds for the EL programs, but then incurred costs beyond that amount. So they can then request that additional spending authority also. The committee also reviewed the AEA special education balances. The purpose of that is if any of them exceed the 10% of the funded amount, then they can vote to consider reverting those funds back to the state. None of the AEA special ed balances exceeded the 10% and so no balances were reverted. They also approved for 290 districts, just over $170 million for special education balances that were negative. So that amount would be beyond what they were funded for special education programs, and that also can result in a local levy. They also reviewed the special education waiting. So this is an action item in even years or sorry, an action item in odd years and an informational item in even years. So as an odd year in 2023, they did vote to maintain the waitings. They also requested the School Finance Formula Review Committee review the funding of special education programs. And even prior to that request being made, there's a lot being done this year already. Then we moved into the individual districts that were appearing. Riceville appeared with a certificate of need request to provide to be able to access four and a half million dollars of their SAVE funding to pay for construction for daycare and nutrition program expansion. So a certificate of need is required for districts to access SAVE dollars for construction if they either have less than 100 students in their high school or they have less than 255 students in their district. And that request was approved. There were three districts who appeared to request MSA for hazard abatement. All three districts were approved. That is also an SBRC shall if they provide timely and complete documentation. Clear Creek, Amana appeared for two reasons. One, they were directed to appear by the committee because they had a negative regular program balance. So that means from the funding they received, they used too much of regular program dollars and used authority related to their categorical dollars to pay for regular program costs. So they weren't, they did not incur a total negative unspent balance. However, without the cushion of the categoricals, they would have been negative. So SBRC practice a few years ago was to require those districts to appear to provide just an explanation of the situation as a proactive measure to help districts look into these things, look into their fiscal position prior to actually incurring a negative unspent balance. They also appeared to request $150,000 for initial staffing due to opening up a new school building and that request was approved. We had four districts that appeared to provide a corrective action plan for their late fiscal filing. All four were approved. We had two districts that appeared to provide a corrective action plan for their negative unspent balance. Both of those were approved as well as the related amount of modified supplemental amount, the modified supplemental amount requested. And then one district appeared to provide a corrective action plan for their negative unspent balance. The corrective action plan was approved. However, the amount of MSA that they requested in relation to that negative unspent balance corrective action plan was denied. And the reason it was denied is because the district actually incurred a negative unspent balance, not due to over coding and overspending, but actually due to miscoding. And so the, the, they were recommended to work with their auditor to correct any unlawful coding expenditures, which in doing so, those will be corrected and then they, that will be corrected in the next year. Do you have any questions?
I have a few. Yeah, the plan for CAM was accepted with reservations.
Yes, they have incurred a negative unspent balance for multiple years. And the plan that they had provided previously was duplicated this year. And so it was recommended that they add a few more things to it. So they will be providing an updated corrective action plan with a little bit more thoughtfulness put into the plan so that they can identify additional measures because the measures, measures in that plan didn't work because it still resulted in late filing. And so however, they, they have a, some turnover going on as well. So we, there was some grace lunch to allow them time to create that.
With the Iowa City, this is number 18. The corrective action plan was approved. And then they also approved modified supplemental amount. Where does that money come? I mean, I know it's a local levy, but is this an addition to what they normally would receive?
Right. So it's, it's practice for a lot of districts that incur a negative balance to actually request also the amount by which they were negative so that they're actually starting then from a, a net zero position. However, in Iowa City's case, there was a mistake in their fiscal reporting. So they were actually negative about two and a half million dollars due to a double entry from some special education transportation costs. And so they may be returning in March to request that additional $2 million. So that was a little bit of additional information there. They talked about considering it at the December hearing, however, without board action approving the request, they were, they did not take up the request.
I'm not sure. Yeah, okay. But it's so unless there's some type of, I guess, inaccuracy in what the request was, it's a one-time funding request though, isn't it?
Correct.
You're just trying to make them whole so they can start at zero? Is that what you're trying to do?
That, that's, that's what it does is it takes that negative amount then and backs it up. So they do take the total amount they were negative by which they were negative. And then they consider the amount of their special education deficit because that's an SBRC shall. So they know that in this case, they were negative, I can't remember, eight or 10 million dollars, but their special education deficit was the majority of that. And they don't, they don't penalize them for that because they know that those are costs that they're required to incur. And then we also look at if they were going to have any additional applications approved for increased enrollment or other things. And we look at what that would take then, what the actual difference was at the, at the end of that calculation.
So will Central do it come back and ask for modified supplemental amounts?
You know, they were actually negative by $418,000. But they actually requested the $1.5 million that they had miscoded in MSA and that amount was denied. So they had some turnover in the business office and some, I think fiscal practices that just weren't documented. And so at the end of the year, and they finalized their fiscal reporting and then they learned some things. And so they did come to the department, they did ask us if they could open up their their certified annual report and other fiscal reports to, to change that. However, our practice is no unless it lies, unless it affects our federal reports. We get numerous requests and if, once we start granting those requests after the due date, then the due date becomes not as impactful. And so we have a standard practice of saying no unless it affects the federal reports. But we did talk to them at length about how this would work, actually working with their auditors. There were some construction payments that should have been paid from the debt service levy. I think about $900,000. So just the, and the auditor should work with them this year then to correct that. So once they do that, that'll have, that's, that exceeds the amount of 400,000 that they were actually, by which they were actually negative.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions?
It's my list. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Every student succeed? Good afternoon. Yeah, maybe Jay.
Everyone's time as always. I've got sort of back to back pieces, three different items that I'm going to cover here. You know, I tend to move quickly. Please stop me, ask clarifying questions. Let's try to make this as interactive as possible. So the first thing. is the Every Student Succeeds Act. Um, so I want to provide some background, give you a quick overview. Uh, so why are we doing this? Why is this an agenda item for the board? Um, give you a, uh, an overview of those proposed changes and then talk a little bit about the feedback we've received thus far in terms of, um, our engagement with the field. So, um, the current ESSA plan, um, was, comes from, uh, the, the latest version of the Elementary, Secondary and Edu- Education Act, which was, um, passed in 2015. Um, we started, uh, working as a state to design, uh, an Iowa-specific, uh, ESSA plan. Uh, so that happened throughout 2017 and then in 2018, uh, it was approved, uh, by the US Department of Ed. And so we've been acting, you know, uh, uh, under those, um, the, those rules, um, in that, that are outlined in that plan. But there are pieces, because it was, you know, done six years ago, uh, that are dated. Our targets and goals that are in our plan were built off of the old Iowa tests and not on the new ISAS. So we have no choice but to update the plan. Um, anyway, so we have to submit that, uh, by February and we wanted to use this as an opportunity to, um, build in some of the feedback that we've heard over those six years, uh, uh, since we, um, implemented this in 2018. Um, there were also some disruptions, uh, due to COVID. So, you know, the assessment, uh, was, was canceled for a year. So designations were frozen, um, for a couple of years, uh, until we have, you know, new assessment results and we're able to sort of restart designations. So again, we need to submit this in February. Um, and in order to submit that plan, we have to consult with the field. Um, so throughout December and January, we've been engaging different groups and I'll talk a little bit more about who we've talked to thus far. Um, and certainly want to give, you know, with the state board's role, um, want to give you all an opportunity to provide us feedback, um, as well. And the whole idea here is that the, you know, what we're focused mostly on in this presentation, the identification of schools, um, uh, that are targeted, uh, in, in need of targeted support or comprehensive support. Um, there's a whole, uh, set of school improvement activities that need to occur once a school is identified. So, um, in thinking about, uh, submitting a new plan, we wanted to take a step back and just think about, okay, well, what would be in an accountability system? So we need to make sure that the, the, uh, measures, uh, that we choose, um, to rate schools, um, on, um, reflect high expectations for all students. Um, uh, that students are graduate, students graduate prepared for success in, for career in college. Um, that in, through our school improvement efforts, that we, uh, work with districts, um, on their improvement, uh, using evidence-based practices, um, that the system we use to rate schools is consistent, reliable. Um, that there aren't any big differences between elementary schools and middle schools. Um, that, you know, it doesn't, uh, disproportionately identify small schools versus big schools, like those kinds of considerations. Um, and, and, you know, that the performance profile is, which is the way in which we release these designations, um, and the system we put in place is easily understood by school communities, um, uh, families, taxpayers, uh, and that we provide, uh, good data, um, through that process.
Jay?
Yeah, please.
If I could just add a quick framing point, um, and Jay's going to talk about the robust, uh, process we've already engaged in today. But one framing point that we've talked with all superintendents about, all education leaders about, is of course our accountability system has to comply with federal and state law. But the department's vision for accountability is to ensure that we're using it to identify those schools and those school communities and those students and those student groups who are most in need of support to inform our school improvement efforts, which, uh, as you all know, Tina and her team lead. So it's really, uh, intended to, uh, inform our partnerships and our, uh, uh, ability to best come alongside local leaders to, to support continuous improvement. Thanks, Jay.
Yeah, thank you. So to, uh, add to what Director Snow, uh, said, we, so we've been engaging throughout December and this last week, um, uh, with the field. Um, so we hit all nine regional superintendents. Um, we had a, a meeting with the educational associations, ISB, SAI, et cetera. Um, there's a pretty robust curriculum network. Um, we had 500 or so folks, 400, um, on that meeting. There were 90-plus questions. We couldn't get through all of them, uh, but, um, you know, we've spent 11 hours, uh, engaging the field, you know, showing them what the changes are and then asking for their feedback. Um, and the next step in the process is a statewide survey that we're working on to get an even wider, uh, set of, um, uh, feedback from, you know, folks in the field, not just superintendents. Um, and then after we call through all the comments that we received, uh, take a look at the survey results, you know, what, what changes do we want to make to the plan? So to be clear, what I'm going to show you is what we also shared with the regional superintendents and, um, and the, this very, the various groups.
And, and just before we leave the process component, um, in, in consulting with the US Department of Education, because of course they approve our plan for compliance, so we, we pre-vet, um, potential changes with them. Uh, this is an incredibly robust consultation process that we're very proud of. Um, consultation is required. How you do consultation is not defined. Um, so we have, as Jay indicated, um, been able to engage in face-to-face conversations with, with superintendents across the state, with education leaders across the state before finalizing, uh, a drafter, before updating our draft, uh, for the, the public survey. Um, so this is a real bright spot in our process and something we're really proud of.
Oh, thank you. So here's some guiding principles. Um, simplification, hopefully you'll see this in some of the examples that I'll provide, um, that the system itself is overly complex. And, um, we've done a lot of model, modeling to make sure that, um, that the, the new system that we're putting in place, again, um, is fair and reliable. Uh, but simplification is one of our overarching, um, goals here. Um, we're also, uh, changing some of the measures to really more, more focus more on outcomes and not inputs. Um, and I'll touch on a couple of those changes in a minute. So just a few high-level examples, um, adding science. Um, you know, given the focus on STEM within the state, the need for science in, in, you know, uh, in careers, uh, this, the science assessment that we have in the state isn't part of the system. So we want to add science. Um, chronic absenteeism, uh, that's an indicator that we use to measure, uh, uh, students that have missed significant parts of their school year. Um, and I'll show you some stats here that are pretty alarming, but, um, this is a, because of the, uh, what we're seeing both in Iowa and nationally, we feel that it's really important that a system focus on making sure the kids are attending school regularly. Um, and then lastly, uh, I'll get into more detail about some changes to our post-secondary readiness measures. Um, this is feedback that, um, that we have received prior to this most recent round of consultation. Um, you know, every year I, I get a series of phone calls and some folks are really happy with their designations and others, um, uh, ask me lots of questions, or, you know, about why they're rated a particular way. Um, uh, but then also questions about the, uh, measures that, uh, that we use to, um, identify and hold schools accountable. So one of them that has been the most controversial is this conditions for learning survey. So, um, and what that means is we give a survey to kids that, um, ask them questions about safety and engagement and, and their school environment, which is really important. Um, but a lot of the feedback that we've received is should schools be held accountable for, for those, for a school survey or a student survey? Um, there's been questions about scoring and how much, uh, it's weighted in our system. Um, confusion about scoring, um, and I'll show you how we're trying to, um, address that. Um, and then questions about the post-secondary readiness, uh, measures themselves. So currently, um, uh, there are four measures, uh, for post-secondary readiness. One is ACT and SAT participation, uh, ACT and SAT score. So did a particular kid get above a certain cut on the ACT? And since, you know, higher ed has largely gone to test optional, um, where they're no longer requiring those college entrance exams, um, we feel it's pretty important, uh, to acknowledge that, um, if, if it's not a requirement for kids to get into four-year post-secondary. So, um, so there's been a lot of questions about, uh, uh, that in, those indicators. And then lastly, the need to balance proficiency and growth. Um, and I'll show you an example of, of how we achieve that.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
And I'm going to chalk this up still to being a little bit new, kind of going through this process. How do we factor in apprenticeship or kids who are taking alternative paths to post-secondary education with student success? And every student succeeds with this reporting system?
So that's actually, uh, one of the changes that we're proposing, um, to, so currently, um, I know I didn't finish all, all the measures, but it's ACT and SAT. It's, um, course-taking in CTE, um, like a CTE concentrator. And then lastly, kids that take some type of advanced coursework, whether that's a, you know, concurrent enrollment course. So we're, we're focused on course-taking. What we're proposing to change it to is, um, the percent of students that, um, get a work-based learning, um, experience while in high school, the percent of students that, um, uh, actually get college credit, uh, and then the percent of students that get some type of industry-recognized credential while in high school. So trying to focus more on the outputs, like having attained these things or done these things throughout high school. Um, so, so that's one of the shifts that we're trying to make is really focus more on those, those different types of pathways that we think kids should experience while in high school.
Thank you.
Sure. So here's, uh, yet more specificity around some of the changes. Um, so we're proposing a point system. Um, and I, I have a, a good example of what that looks like. We're, um, we're also going to streamline measures, so fewer measures for schools to focus on. Um, uh, once a school's designated within our system or currently, uh, approved system, it's a three-year cycle, so they sort of feel locked in. So we're proposing to change that for schools that are targeted. If they show improvement, they can exit, um, early. They don't, they're not sort of locked in after three years. Um, we're going to change how participation in assessments contributes to overall scores. Um, this is a requirement, uh, participation rate is a requirement, um, uh, that, uh, you know, 95% of kids have to participate in the assessment. Um, and currently it contributes to a school's score when it's really more of a compliance requirement. And so it'll definitely be a factor. It will just be, um, not part of a school's score. Um, I mentioned the changes to post-secondary readiness. Um, we're also going to, we're proposing to remove three items. Uh, average scale score, which is some overlap with the proficiency measure. So again, trying to cut down the number of measures and not duplicate. Um, remove five-year grad rate is something that we're thinking about. So there's one graduation rate, which is the four-year rate. So we're focusing on kids completing high school within that window. Um, removing conditions for learning, um, and replacing it with chronic absenteeism. And then the last one, um, is, uh, uh, basically allowing kids that are English learners to be counted in the proficiency real, results after exiting English language status. And, um, so right now, you know, when, when a kid, uh, you know, tests, um, proficient, they're no longer, um, in the proficiency calculation for that subgroup. So the purpose of this really is to honor the hard work that goes into getting a student o- over that line, if you will. Um, uh, and, uh, and this would allow that. Here's some of the data on chronic absenteeism. Um, you can see in the 2016, 17 school year are chronic absenteeism rates. And so the definition of chronic absenteeism is that a kid has missed 10% or more of their school year. A typical school year is 180 days. That kid would have missed over three, three and a half weeks of school to be considered chronically absent. Um, so a significant portion of the year. Um, so it was 11% in 16, 17. It topped out, we hope, in 21, 22 at just over, uh, 25%, 26% of kids are missing, you know, 18 more, 18 or more days a year. Um, and it went down slightly in 23, 20, 22, 23, which is, you know, good. Um, this again, isn't just an Iowa problem, it's a national problem. Um, in that same year, uh, the nation as a whole was at 25% in 21, 22. This is the, uh, before picture. This is our currently approved accountability plan. Um, here's the, the measures. Um, and I'll get to an example in a minute. Um, so we're trying to, to streamline, um, so participation rate would be removed. Again, that's a compliance requirement. Um, growth at this point in, in middle, I'm sorry, elementary and middle school is, is the largest part of the system. Um, so it's 36%. Um, uh, conditions for learning is at 18%, which is above proficiency. So we're trying to balance, um, uh, or sort of right-size, um, uh, how, uh, the measures themselves, but also, uh, the points in which they're assigned or they're worth. Um, in high school, you can see here, um, these change a little bit because we have to accommodate for that four-year and five-year rate and the post-secondary readiness, uh, measures themselves. So this is what we currently have approved. The new point system, you can see it's fewer, um, fewer measures. We're adding science, um, uh, growth and, uh, English language growth make up 300 points, which equals proficiency at 300 points. And then we would, um, have chronic absenteeism, uh, instead of that conditions for learning survey. And then at the high school level, switching, um, over, we need to accommodate for the four-year rate and then post-secondary readiness.
And then just a clarifying point on this, because I know growth is broken out, um, between growth for ELA and math, English Language Arts and Math, and then growth experienced by students who are English language learners, which is a federally required indicator. But it's 300 points for proficiency and it's 300 points for growth. So it is equally weighting proficiency and growth. And it's actually more highly weighting, uh, o- obviously proficiency, but also growth.
Thank you.
So, could you stay on that slide for a second?
Yes.
So chronic, I understand that the other point to this too, that there's, I guess there's more points.
Yes, so that's one of the other changes is again, trying to simplify the, the system itself as opposed to, you know, in this particular case, um, you know, participation rate being at 10%. So instead of 100 scale, which adds a certain level of connotation to it, we're changing the scale entirely to 700 points for elementary, middle school and then 900 for high schools.
And the purpose of that is, so just take proficiency, for example. Right now, ELA proficiency is six percentage points. So then you take a proficiency rate and you correspond that. And, and Jay's got a great example of that. To a percent, here, it would just clearly denote what the proficiency rate was. So if it, if it was 78% of, uh, students proficient, 78 points out of 100. So it's clear and transparent to, to communities and to educators. And do you mind jumping to the math real quick?
Yeah, so this is, uh, this row that says current is what our current system is. So this is a real example of a school that has an English language proficiency rate. an English language proficiency rate of 80.9. This is the formula we currently use. So 80.9 converts to a standard score of 57.61. We multiply that by 6.75%, which is what Director Snow was alluding to. And this school, for English language proficiency, would have received 3.89 points. So the new way would be 80.9 ELA proficiency score out of 100, you get 80.9. So really trying to decrease the confusion around what does 3.89 points mean? Does that make sense? Additional?
I think it's much more understandable as far as converting to the 100 points. That's.
Yeah, that's our hope. The other item we want to unify is how, so we have both in state statute and then under the, I saw, we've got federal statute. And in essence, we've been running two systems simultaneously. And so the goal here would be to sort of unify them. And, you know, at the federal level, we have two designations. We've got comprehensive, so that's schools that fall into the lowest 5%. And that's a requirement within that federal statute. We have to identify at least 5% of schools for comprehensive support. Schools that are identified for targeted support are looking at specific student groups within that school, including all the race, ethnicity groups, black students, Hispanic students, et cetera, students with disabilities, English learners, and students eligible for free reduced-price lunch. And so we would still look at those subgroups to identify targeted schools. But in our proposal, we're thinking about calling them just priority schools, regardless of however you got there. And then if you are not targeted or comprehensive, based on your school's overall score, you would receive one of these other rating categories. And these rating categories are what's in state statute. So we're trying to, again, simplify and unify both state and federal accountability in a way that's hopefully cohesive and coherent to the field. So we've been doing these listening sessions, the meetings that I touched on earlier. Again, next step is to review the feedback that we have heard all along and put that out in a survey. And then once we get the feedback from the survey, consider what changes we want to make.
Who's the survey angel to?
It'll be open to the public. We're going to do outreach to superintendents. Certainly, they're a key group. But if you want to fill out the survey, you're welcome to fill out the survey.
So just going to be a public notice that this survey is available? And you can send out awareness messages or?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, social media, directly to superintendents, et cetera.
Just one additional clarifying point. This is the presentation that's been provided to superintendents and to education leaders because we wanted their preliminary feedback and engage in robust discussion and benefit from their expertise. There may be modifications made to this plan before it goes to public comment based on the feedback that we received in those preliminary consultation face-to-face sessions. I'm lost here, sorry.
It's been a busy start to the year, in a good way. You know, we've, this plan is due by February, and we need to make sure that we, you know, get to key leaders across the state in making this change. So we're going to submit this in February. U.S. Department of Ed uses sort of the first-in, last-in approach. So depends on where we get in the queue. We don't believe that we're proposing anything or thinking about anything that wouldn't get approved. But it is contingent on them, you know, reviewing it and telling us this looks good for us to implement it. But if it gets approved, you know, our idea would be that we would implement this for the next release of the performance profiles next fall. Any other questions, thoughts, comments about this plan?
Good work to me.
Thank you.
Mrs. Robbins, the next-gen item is directly related to this, looking back at our ISSAS results at our high school.
Yes.
Can you translate into that? Okay. And just for Jay, oh.
Please.
So as Jay pulls this up, again, this is data that in our conversations with superintendents across the state and visiting every single superintendent's region in AEA, we have gone through our state-level ISSAS data and we've gone through our designations and Iowa's performance profiles with a strong focus. Performance, especially student group performance among students with disabilities and students who are English language learners and significant achievement gaps we see experienced by those two student groups in particular. And then also our trend data over time. And some bright spots have been, of course, that the state of Iowa experienced very little to no learning loss because of leadership in ensuring that schools remained open for in-person instruction and that there were limited educational disruptions. But also, as we've remained steady, a need for further improvement in our trend data because as other states continue to improve and also recover from learning loss, our state assessment data remains pretty flat. So I'll get to Jay after that framing.
Yeah, thank you. So there's actually more in the slides. I'm not going to touch on every single slide. There's 28 slides in the deck. We'd be here for another hour. And while I really appreciate the time in front of you, I know you've had a long day. So to Director Snow's point, I'm just going to focus on some of the student groups. And then, you know, as you have time, go back and take a look at the rest of it, if that's okay. So I want to touch on the performance profiles and then review some of the ISSAS results as well as touch on the National Assessment of Educational Progress or NAEP. So the performance profiles is that very public website that we release every fall. And it includes the rating categories for every school, but then any identification, whether it's targeted or comprehensive. And every state must have a report card. Although the measures that states choose can be a little bit different. The methodology can be a little bit different, so they're not completely comparable. But this is our version of that report card under SFA. And then, you know, going to largely focus on the achievement-opportunity gap for students with disabilities, English learners. You saw this a few minutes ago, so I don't need to belabor it. So when we look at the performance profiles, in October, we released the latest round of designation. There were 133 new schools that were identified for TSI. You know, and as I mentioned, once you're identified, you're in a three-year cycle, although we would hope to reset designation next fall if we get approval to do so. So this gives you this table where folks are. So this is year two of a three-year cycle. We reset designations la, not this past fall, but fall of '22 because we had been frozen for a couple of years. So there are, you know, 32 schools that are either extended comprehensive. So those are schools that were identified in the original designations that never exited. So they never got above that 5% threshold. And then there were 20 new comprehensive schools. Schools that are extended targeted are schools that, again, that same student group in which they had been identified originally did not improve. So we've got about 12% of schools there. We've got 176 schools that were identified last fall. So they're in year two of support. And then, again, 10% of schools that were newly identified. So this just gives you a sense of how many schools, 1,294, of which 61% don't have any kind of designation. This table gives you a sense of, you know, of those schools that have an identification, you know, what percentage of schools are identified for that student group? So just as an example, if we look at students with disability, 1,295 schools, 609 actually have enough students. So there's like a minimum number of students that we need to have.
Is that still 10 or?
It's 20.
20?
And the rationale there is that the, you know, that student, like, the N size is large enough that the data are reliable. So if you imagine if we made it 10, one student would make a much larger percentage. If, so the idea there is that, you know, that we try to calculate a score for as many schools as possible, but we also want the results of those calculations to be reliable and stable. So 609 schools have 20 or more kids. And of those, 281 or 46% are identified because of students with disabilities. So this gives you a sense of.
Because they have achievement gaps experienced by students with disabilities.
Yes, absolutely. So that's certainly, in terms of just the N count and the percentage, one of the largest reasons for identification. I think on the positive end, only 9% of schools that have enough students eligible for free or reduced-price lunch to calculate a score, which is 83%. Only 9% of schools are identified for that particular reason. And in our modeling on this proposed system, that percentage actually goes down slightly.
Have you done modeling with English learners as far as additional two years, what that would mean?
Yes. Yeah. It's stable between the old system and the new system. So this was the, you know, the high-level takeaway in terms of identification in that October release of the performance profiles.
Can't quite see the multiracial because of your head's in the way.
Sorry. Big head.
Okay.
Hopefully, big brain, but we'll let you judge.
So the category of multiracial has been increasing.
Is that cheering your way?
No, I can see that. Has been increasing as far as the number of students and.
That identify, absolutely, yeah.
Do you remember when that category first came in? It hasn't been that long ago.
It's been longer than you think. So we, you know, went around the state in '09, and I think it started in 2010, '11 was the first.
Fall years.
Yeah.
Jay, I know this is a really robust presentation, but can we, I want to make sure that we get to the trend data too.
Yes, okay, so I'll keep us moving, thank you. So just one other takeaway, and that is, you know, across these rating categories, we had a slightly higher percent of schools move into that upper half than the previous year. So it was just on, you know, 50.6, that went up to 53% of schools commendable or higher. So that's certainly a good thing that we're seeing more schools sort of shift into that higher ratings. So just switching gears, I'm going to start talking about ISSAS results and the NAEP and just want to give you a sense of the students and the percent of the overall population that we're talking about. So you can see here, you know, 72.4% of students are white. And the remainder, so roughly, you know, 27, 28% of students in Iowa schools are a student of color. 13% are students with disabilities, about 7% are English learners, and about 42% of students are eligible for free or reduced-price lunch. I'm going to jump into some of the gaps and focus on students with disabilities. So this, there's a lot of really good data here. The top end is the percent of all students that are proficient. So, and then we've got each year from left to right, 2018 administration to this dark blue bar is the 2223. So the most recent ISSAS data that are. So in math, 76% of all students are proficient. That's compared to 43% of students proficient that is a student has a disability. And then the 33 represents the difference between these numbers. So you can get a sense, so when you take a look at that overall, those percentages across all grade levels, there's a 42 percentage point difference between all students and students with disabilities in the most recent administration. That's math. When we think about English learners, again, that just focused on third-grade math. It's 76% of students are proficient in third-grade math compared to 39% for English learners with a difference of 37 percentage points. So overall, across grade levels, it's 46 percentage points different. So pretty sizable, both for students with disabilities, 42 percentage points and 46 percentage points for English learners. And then lastly, Hispanic students. So you can see here, it ranges from a high-end in third-grade math at 58 to, you know, 42 percentage points in ninth grade for Hispanic students in mathematics with an average difference of 17 percentage points. Again, there's more data in the slide deck. I'm going to switch over to English Language Arts, focusing on students with disabilities. I said 42 percentage points overall in math. It is actually more larger in English Language Arts, so 46 percentage points for students with disabilities in ELA. And then you can see here, the lower part of the bar represents the students with disabilities.
And Jay, just before you leave that slide, you've represented the data here over every single year that we administer the ISSAS. But also, Jay's team has looked at the data based on quadrant of school performance. And in all quadrants of school performance, so the schools identified for improvement are lowest-performing schools and highest-performing schools. We see the achievement gap persist and at times be larger in high-performing schools across all school types among students with disabilities. So it is not, the achievement gaps experienced are not specific to students with disabilities and low-performing schools. It is systemic and it is across all school types.
It seems to be fairly consistent, too. It's not like they're getting worse or getting better. Do we have an answer for that or something? I mean, that's obviously the big question is how do we close these gaps, but like-
It's, it's a persistent, ongoing, going problem that has existed. And some of the more recent data, we've gone back to take a look at, okay, let's look at the old Iowa assessments and look at, while it is a different assessment and the, you know, the benchmarks are different, it's, it's pretty substantial and, you know, larger even more recently than it was then.
And then just the last thing you'll notice is, is obviously, achievement gaps compound over time. So the achievement gap gets larger as students progress in school, which is unfortunately a trend we see across the board.
Yeah, so if you're behind the likelihood that you're going to catch up over time, it's even harder. That's a good, good thing to point out, Director. In terms of English learners, 53 percentage points in ELA. And again, the gap is at 40 in grade percentage points in grade three and 59 percentage points in grade 11. And his-
So what happens in third grade?
I think many would, would-
I mean, because most of every chart, that line is a lot lower than everyone else's.
So that, that's the 20, so specifically in third grade, the gray bar is the 2021 school year. So obviously, those were young students who had experienced COVID disruptions entering third grade.
Okay, that makes sense.
And then Jay, Jay's focused on, on three student groups. These are the, and that's because these are the three student groups with the largest achievement gaps.
And Hispanic students is also maybe just growing group in the state, percentage-wise. Going to switch to the NAEP results. So just to level set a little bit, NAEP is the main NAEP, is administered every two years. There were some, there was also a disruption to that assessment. So you'll see back-to-back years trying to catch up. That main NAEP focuses on grade four reading and mathematics and grade eight reading. It's the only comparison that exists state to state. It's considered the gold standard for assessment. There's a lot that goes into the psychometrics and the governing board, and just in terms of overseeing that assessment and ensuring comparability. You know, we've got trend lines going back to 1990, and I'll show you that in a little bit. You know, we've been answering a lot of questions recently about, you know, who takes the NAEP? What does the sampling look like? And, you know, it's a really robust stratified sample, you know, within Iowa, but then also nationally to make sure that the schools that are picked and the students that are picked are representative of, of the percentages within that state and schools within that state. So it's a really robust sampling. And, you know, NAEP does have other grade levels that, that they all assess and report. It's just not as frequent. So Social Studies is another one that was released in 2020 as well. That's just another example. This focuses on the most recent, so we're looking at average NAEP scores by student group, and this is just Iowa results. And where Iowa students fall compared to other states by student group. So you can see here, particularly students with disabilities, you know, ranking 40th in grade four reading, 31 in grade eight reading.
Jay, when you say you're ranking, what is, what does 40 mean, you mean?
Yeah, sorry.
40th state or-
Nation or what?
Yeah.
Top 40 or-
Number, so it's all 50 states. It's a, you know, again, nationally administered, the first state would be the highest.
One would be the best.
So 40 is probably not great.
Right.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right.
But yeah, basically, ranking from high to low. You can see here, Hispanic students. So by and large, many of the student groups are in the lower half. Although, on the most recent set of data, as Director Snow alluded to, Iowa looks pretty good. With that said, and I'll show you some trend, Iowa's one of only six states that had a significant decline in only one of these areas. So we decreased significantly in eighth grade, I believe it was reading, when all states, you know, except that, those six, saw declines in two or more, significant declines in two or more of those areas. So, you know, our hypothesis is because kids had access to or were in school, that the, we dropped a lot less than, than many other states saw declines in. So when we take a look at these, you know, rankings, over time, you can see here in '92, all students in grade eight mathematics was number one. In 2019, was 25, you know, so-
Is this Iowa was one and then Iowa's, okay.
Yes, sorry. So this, just focusing on where Iowa compares.
Oh, okay.
And then, most recently, you know, we saw some increases, but unfortunately, it's only because many states saw much larger declines than we did. And then-
So the, and just the, sorry to interrupt you, but just to forecast on this briefly, and, and what we've been discussing with superintendents is, we're really proud that we did not experience significant learning loss because of the leadership in keeping schools open for in-person instruction. But because our math and our ELA scores are pretty level, because, and, and we, we appeared to have gone up in the 22 rankings, it is because other states experienced such significant learning loss. And if we do not increase our, our student achievement, we are likely to drop in the rankings as other states recover their learning loss. So just as Jay articulated, but, but stated just a little different.
Thank you. And then, more specifically, you can see there's been a lot of robust discussion around students with disabilities and showed you the ISAS results. But this is what it looks like in '09 was the first time that this student group was available. So there's not trend data back to '92. That's the reason for this asterisk, but you could see it's pretty consistent compared to other states, consistently low over a significant period of time. So any additional questions? I guess just to summarize, you know, we do have, you know, some bright spots. I mean, certainly, you know, seeing ISAS results rebound. As Director Snow pointed out, the bar in those charts was pretty low. But when we look at like third-grade reading, at least 66% of students are proficient in reading. That's a key area, a key time in a student's life. So 33% of students today, even though we're, we're seeing pretty consistent results over time, is that good enough? What can we do as a state to increase that?
And this is on NAEP, right?
I was switching back to-
Nice.
Yeah, sorry. But just trying to summarize some of what I just showed you.
So then, one of the, one of the strategies that's being noted is the new reading program. Training behind that, are there other strategies that are being looked at as far as trying to close gaps?
So, so early literacy is a key priority. And then, as discussed earlier, addressing achievement gaps experienced by students with disabilities and ensuring that, that we're, we're taking a look at the AEA system, as we talked about earlier, to ensure that, that funds are targeted and best-serving students with disabilities, which is that core purpose.
I, I thought there was also the potential to have certification, is maybe that's not to correct. I, I thought I saw that as a proposal as well in-
The literacy?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
As another, to make sure that kids that are, are kids, that kids graduating are prepared.
And that, and that's another piece we talked about in the director's report, about ensuring that teacher preparation programs are, are supporting teacher candidates in deploying science of reading-driven instruction and also including competency, literacy instruction assessments as a part of the teacher licensure process.
So I believe that closing achievement gaps will be one of our outcomes and our goal, so stay tuned.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
Okay, we're going to finish strong. Eric, take some.
Eric, you have just one of the- You have two minutes.
That might be, that might do it. Thank you again for the opportunity to talk to you today. What you have in front of you is a required report that we need to make to the state board. There's no action required, but we are required to make this. What the report is, is based on Iowa Code 2561110A4, and we need to report any school district or any non-compliance item that was not corrected in 30 days. This past year, there was only two. One of them was Janesville Community School with short one math unit, and they were not able to add a math unit. This year, we've talked to them, and in fact, we talked to the superintendent and the counselor and clarified that beginning this year, they can use concurrent enrollment courses to meet the minimum offer and teach, and they have a strong agreement, not only with Hawkeye Community College, but they also have students taking classes at Beverly Show Rock. So we don't anticipate this to be an issue in the future, but they were not able to meet that last year, so. And they, based on their data this year, they weren't able to meet that either, but we did have a good conversation with the council and the superintendent, so I think we'll be good there. The second one was BCLUW was not able to hire a certified librarian. They had reached out to some neighboring school districts, still weren't able to do that, or they weren't able to share, and so they revised their advertisement, and we'll be continuing to work with them on that to be able to get a librarian there for them, so.
Is two kind of a low number?
To, to, for 30 days out, it is typically, we don't have any in the past.
We had zero last year.
Last year, there was zero that were 30 days out. A few years ago, we had a district or two that, that had quite a few non-compliance items that were way past 30, but we corrected them and had those done, so, yeah.
As the concurrent enrollment, I guess, strategy or opportunity helped alleviate some of this?
I think it will. This will be our first year with it, but yeah. You know what, I can safely say yes, it has, because there's been some districts that had students enrolled in concurrent enrollment for this year, and that corrected the non-compliance, so yes.
So it's like, can it be like retroactively applied or?
It'll be, no, it starts to be applied this year, but especially for offer and teach, like last year, during a school year, you kind of know what students are taking, what courses students are taking. And so now, the way to correct it is we asked for a master schedule for the, for the next school year. That's usually provided to us in August, and that's pretty well set because they have students enrolled in it. And so we made sure that we worked with districts to make sure that, that they knew, starting this school year, they could use concurrent enrollment.
Okay.
And so then that did alleviate the number.
Any questions? Mueller? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The quickest one of the day.
So are we ready for our two-hour work session now, or should we adjourn?
I feel like it's getting dark outside.
Thank you so much for the longest meeting that I've been associated with here. Got a lot done, appreciate your time and effort. And for our remote people, thanks for hanging in with us for the entire-
Oh, I think so, the, the S M A C?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify because I heard a couple of times during our presentations today about people coming back to us in February. So is, is that correct? Are we taking that February day that we had put as, as a, we might need as we are going to meet on that day?
Yeah, because we, because we approve, we approved the applications today, and then in February, we will approve their contracts.
Is that going to be an in-person one, or is that going to be like a full day like today?
I haven't got that far yet, I don't know.
I think, I think the discussion has been having a tight agenda for that.
Tight meeting.
Not as, not as long as today's agenda. Tight meeting, does everyone need to come by for the special meeting? Sometimes they do it via Zoom or whatever. Let me check with Thomas on that. Okay.
And, and I just also wanted to make sure-
Need answers.
Oh, keep going, Cindy.
I just wanted to make sure to say thank you for allowing this opportunity to participate by Zoom today because, yes, Iowa weather, just additional challenges, I think. And so I really appreciate that opportunity so we could feel like we could still be very engaged.
Well, you're back on the Jumbotron, so you are right here with us.
You're bigger than life.
Yeah, you're huge.
You got this little, you got this little thing on your cheek.
It does feel like we're- And there's Mary, hey!
If we decided on a March meeting-
I don't think they like me pointing that out.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
If you say something, then you're on the big-
I was wondering if we have decided on a-
Come on, do it! He's on mute.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.
I could do that for you.
Stretch it, okay, thank you.
Mike May was wondering about a location for the March meeting. That's what he was trying to say, I think.
Thank you, Steve, thank you. Yeah, I'm wondering if we have a location for the-